We're going to move on to announcements, presentations. And if you could have your statement we received. Linda, your mic, please. Okay, first item. Item A, City Council Statement on the Death of George Floyd and Our Commitment to Justice and Racial Equality on Behalf of the City of San Bruno. And we have some of your mics are still off.
Oh, thanks. I thought you were saying they were on. Thank you.
No, no. Marty, your mic is on?
Yes.
Marty? Okay. So if we have our statement, so in a lot of cases, the mayor brings something together, communicates to the community as the mayor or on behalf of the city council. However, this was something that was brought forward by council and felt it was extremely important in these difficult, challenging times that this be a collective worked-on statement from the entire city council. This is something we're in concurrence to. What I've also asked of my colleagues is that they all read a portion of it so that as it started united, we send our message united. So I will begin, and then I would ask if each person, Linda, Laura, Marty, Michael, then just follow with the person once they conclude. I'll begin. The City of San Bruno stands with its police chief in condemning the death of George Floyd on May 25, 2020. Racism and injustice have no place in the city with a heart.
San Bruno is not perfect. We recognize this and invite all of our constituents to take the time to self-reflect on racism and inequality throughout your lifetime and how the systems that have been put in place have impacted our communities of color here in San Bruno. We have members in our community who lived through segregationist America. They recall when Black and Brown individuals were required to sit in the back of the bus. We have members in our community who remember when Black and Brown individuals could not swim in the same swimming pool. We have members in our community who remember when Black and Brown individuals were not allowed to live in parts of our community because of the color of their skin. We also have members in our community, a new generation of leaders, who are calling on all of us to stop the ongoing racism that still exists 56 years after the Civil Rights Act was signed into law. This call to action by our youth in 2020 America is a reminder to all of us that mindsets and mindship are a significantly greater obstacle than enacting legislation.
We call on our senior community to tell your stories, and we call on our youth to advise us on how we can be more inclusive. We call on our Black and Brown men and women to tell us your stories of a daily life in 2020 America and possibly more uncomfortable for all of us in 2020. San Bruno, we've been listening. We hear your list of endless fares, being pulled over by the police, walking in your neighborhood at night, wearing clothes without too many pockets. We hear you. San Bruno is listening. We encourage our community to self-reflect and to engage in the dialogue amongst different races and ages because our history with Black and Brown America is complex and uncomfortable. But it impacts lives today and the daily lives of our Black and Brown community. Mr. Floyd's death reminds us that there is a significant work left to be done to achieve true equality and justice for all.
On November 19, 2019, the San Bruno City Council signed a resolution committing to raise awareness, spark action, and conversations to stop hate and to build inclusion by participating in the United Against Hate Campaign. San Bruno, United Against Hate empowers all of our residents to take action in San Bruno to alter the course of growing intolerance while rejecting negative messages. We call on our San Bruno family to actively participate in this campaign by turning words into action 365 days a year. In recent weeks, residents of San Bruno have gathered for nonviolent peaceful demonstrations in the name of equality. Our city departments, including the San Bruno Police Department, welcomed the demonstrations. We encourage all of our residents to join us in engaging and educating ourselves on the national conversation about race and equality happening now. The City of San Bruno stands in solidarity with you.
As elected leaders and policymakers, we acknowledge that at the core of America's values is the promise that all men are created equal and entitled to justice. These promises are included in the Declaration of Independence and in the Pledge of Allegiance that we recite and recommit to before every city council meeting. Within the complexity of these promises are realities that are embedded in America's history of racism and injustice that are amplified because the promises for all have only been delivered to some. The hope we are given today is that the story of America is still being written, and we are the authors of tomorrow.
Here in San Bruno, we are proud of our diversity. As a city with a heart, we ask our entire city family to follow our hearts, to unite us and are conscious to guide us. This is a statement from your San Bruno City Council, and I want to appreciate and thank you, my colleagues, for putting this document together as well as reading it tonight. Now, I'm going to continue on on the announcements and presentations. Item B, Announcement of the Annual Business License Renewal Process. And I did ask if we could have our finance director, Mr. DiMartini, just to expound upon that a little bit.
Yes, for the chair, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Honorable Members of the City Council. Keith DiMartini, your finance director, just a brief announcement to let local businesses in San Bruno know that the annual recertification process for your annual business license is coming up. Certification letters have been sent out to all registered businesses with the City of San Bruno, requiring you to provide additional documentation and make your annual tax payment to the city by the end of June. If you have any questions, please go to our website at sanbruno.ca.gov or call our office. We'd be happy to assist you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to item C, Receive Report and Review Status of Local Emergency Related to Repairs to Crestmore Canyon and Continuing Declaration of Local Emergency. Director Tan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. Jimmy Tan, Public Works Director. On regards to the Crestmore Canyon project, I have a brief update for you to share since, you know, the last report that I made to council on the 26th of May. The agreement to repave the Westbound Lane of San Bruno Avenue was executed after our last update, and the work to repave the, you know, the Westbound Lane commenced today and will be completed tomorrow. And once all the invoices are paid, staff will come back to council to accept and close out the project. But this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, colleagues? Non-senior? Oh, sorry. Michael.
Just one question. So in terms of the, and sorry, I don't remember this, but the process for us to end the state of emergency, would that require a follow-up proclamation, some kind of acknowledgement, or does it just end when the project concludes?
I'll have to defer that to the city attorney if he may answer the question.
City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council. That does require a formal action from the city council?
All right. So we could expect that at the next meeting, we would probably be ready to take that action?
Well, that would, that action would need to be taken after the project is closed out, just to make sure there aren't any issues. Or it certainly could be done at the same time, but whatever the timing works best, we can accomplish.
And Director Tan, I think the next question would be, is there an idea of when that might be completed in that project?
Yeah, currently, I'm anticipating coming back to council at the first meeting in July to close out the project once all the invoices are paid. We paid all the invoices related to the wall construction work, but the only invoice that we need to pay is the pavement work that's remaining currently.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Director. We'll move on to item D, Receive Update on COVID-19 Response Efforts. City Manager.
All right, we will share the screen. Marty, if you'll take care of that. Share the screen with the PowerPoint.
Sure.
Danny, I'll do it. I got it. Let me do it. So as we finalize that display, why don't I begin? So our objective is to give you a really brief update on the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. We'll begin with county stats. We'll talk about changes to the shelter-in-place order. We will talk about testing, programming, and then what's next. So again, every council meeting, we show this graphic. It is, comes from the County Health Department, and total in San Mateo County, there is 2,437 cases. There has been an increase in the death, the number of deaths that currently stands at 93. The other statistics are tracking the same pattern as we have been seeing with the, all of the deaths outside of one being of individuals 50 or over. The gender being roughly split between male and female. However, when we look at our positive cases by race in the county, what we really see is that our Latino and Hispanic community is being more heavily impacted with 1,074 of the 2,400 cases being limited to our Hispanic and Latino community. And there is a wide range of ages for the confirmed cases, so it is affecting every age range in our community. This slide provides the number of positive cases in San, in the City of San Bruno. It also focuses in on the northern San Mateo County region. So within our city, the last time the stats were updated, and you see the number of 2,299 is different than the number of just over 1,400 because the county releases city-by-city data at a different pace than the county-wide data. But the last city-by-city information we have, we know that there are 110 positive cases in the City of San Bruno. And in our northern county area, there are two cities, South San Francisco and Milbrae, with a higher prevalence of cases than us. However, Pacifica has a lower per capita total than the City of San Bruno. A few modifications to the order that we would like to highlight. So as council and the community knows, a modified order went into effect a few days ago. On June 6, it now allows outdoor, also called alfresco dining, and we'll talk a little bit about that because the City of San Bruno did take a step to allow outdoor dining to occur. It allows charter boats to operate and also relax some of the restrictions on funerals. There is now a criteria for both indoor and outdoor funerals, with outdoor funerals limited to 25 people. And all of the other social distancing and face covering requirements remain in effect. In addition, there are a number of other allowable activities. The community has seen indoor and outdoor pools throughout the county opening, as well as out, more outdoor recreations, primarily county parks, and more outdoor shared recreation facilities. The caveat is that they have to be actively managed and monitored, which is why locally in cities throughout the county and our city, not all of the recreation facilities are open because it requires a fairly significant staffing component to actively manage and monitor the recreation facilities and limit them to only individuals in the same household participating. There are new guidelines for car parades, and those are listed. I will not go through all of them. It is important to note that these are different than the graduation parade regulations that were promulgated. These are really for all of the, sort of the new COVID-19 way to have a birthday party and drive by the, the person who's having the birthday house, as we've seen these. And so these are just some regulations to guide that activity, as well as protest gatherings was a specific call-out in the latest order, sort of hard, as we know, to regulate, but they are there. They must be actively managed and monitored and cannot exceed over 100 people or 25% of the occupancy of the space. And that is, again, to allow for that social distancing. Outdoor dining, so what are, where are we at here in the City of San Bruno? So on Friday, the city announced and released outdoor dining regulations that allow the temporary use during COVID-19 only for the use of additional private property or city-owned property for restaurants to increase their seating capacity by having additional seating outside. And the regulations that were promulgated really take a unique approach in allowing businesses almost maximum flexibility that we could occur, that we could allow to have outdoor dining on private property. The regulations outline some basic steps that businesses need to follow and then provide for a noticing period to notice the city after that occurs for a complimentary inspection. However, to use public property, we are waiving all encroachment fee permits, but the business does need to submit an encroachment permit, and that is to use a city property, whether that be the sidewalk, on-street, or a, any other city outdoor facility. And so essentially, what we're saying is we're open for restaurants to come and give us a proposal, and we will certainly entertain that because we recognize the financial stress that COVID-19 is putting on our restaurants. In addition, we did have a public comment that the city should actively contact businesses, and we are doing that in a couple of different ways, not only walking downtown, passing out the order, but also partnering with the Chamber of Commerce and having them do a survey and push out direct communications to our restaurants. There are a number of conditions for outdoor businesses to take advantage of, or restaurants to take advantage of the outdoor dining. One of the pictures is the first restaurant in our city to take advantage of the new regulations. It is Camino Corner. They utilized two parking spaces on their private property, built planter boxes out of redwood, and are up and running with their outdoor dining. And there, on the next slide, we provide contact information, so businesses wanting to use private property, contact the building department. Again, follow the regulations, and you can implement your outdoor dining without prior approval from the city, but then you, there's a requirement of within 48 hours to contact the city for a complimentary inspection from the building department. For public property, contact our Public Works Department, submit the encroachment permit application. We will expedite those and work with you to review your proposal and meet all of the conditions thereabout. Reusable bags, I think businesses started doing this before the county officially allowed it, but just so everyone knows that the county did officially suspend their reusable bag policies. And so their grocery stores or other businesses, they are providing reusable bags at no additional charge. This will remain into effect as long as the health officer allows the suspension of those regulations. And so really what this is intended for is for people that go to grocery stores or businesses to not bring your own bags from home because there may be additional health risks associated with that. And so those regulations have been suspended for the time being. COVID-19 testing, we want to talk again about that. There is COVID-19 testing at various locations throughout the county, San Mateo, Daly City, East Palo Alto. We are working, actively working with the county on a testing site for the City of San Bruno. In addition, there were two new no-cost testing sites announced in Half Moon Bay and Redwood City. Again, as we've been talking about, the regulations on testing or the protocols have been relaxed, and so you do not need symptoms. Anyone can go to the website baseline.com/covid to register and receive free COVID-19 testing. And then what we all know from the various county calls that the cities and not just staff, but city council members have been sitting on, is our county is doing an excellent job in testing. What we need to do now is expand that to every city in the county, and we are working again on that for the City of San Bruno. So we're hearing a lot of questions, and so we want to provide some answers because not every county in the state is the same. So a couple of things we're hearing. When will hair salons and barber shops be open? I would love that question. And similar, when will nail shops, salons be open? We do not know. The health officer is modifying the regulations at a cadence of every week or two, but that is not currently allowed in San Mateo County. There are some counties that are allowing the personal grooming services, but that is not currently allowed in San Mateo County and here in the City of San Bruno. We do not have a timing on that, nor do we have a timing on when restaurants will be allowed to have indoor dining. And all of these regulations are being promulgated by the San Mateo County Health Department based on data and the Health Department's assessment on what is appropriate, given not only positive cases, but the number of people that are currently hospitalized and our bed capacity. Because as a reminder, all of these preventative steps we're taking are to prevent the spread of COVID-19. They are not to eliminate it. We know that social distancing will help to lower the curve, but we are all desperately waiting on a vaccine and/or treatment regimen. The shops at Tan Fran, when will those reopen? Well, the good news is shop Tan Fran will reopen at 11:00 a.m. tomorrow with a very thick set of regulations that they are following for every business in the mall. They will have two entrances, one on the BART side, one on the El Camino side. They will facilitate that, but Tan Fran is allowed to reopen under new guidance from the State of California that our health officer is also following. Curbside pickup, this is just a reminder that the library is now offering curbside service here in the City of San Bruno. There are times between 3:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. for pre-arranged appointments. We know that a lot of people depend on our library even more now because everyone is at home looking at, looking for things to do, and we've had a number of requests. And so just wanted to remind people that that program started on June 1st and is continuing. Feel free to call the library, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Again, stay connected on social media. We are continuing to push out information via all of our social media platforms, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and go to the city's website, sanbruno.ca.gov/coronavirus for this PowerPoint, as well as all of the other PowerPoints and a wealth of information about coronavirus and to forward you to other links, including business assistance. So that's the presentation. I know we give these every two weeks for the council, and we will continue to do so as long as it continues to be necessary and is beneficial to the community. That's all I have.
Thank you, City Manager. Are there any questions or comments from council? Sure. And Michael and Javon, can you take the shared screen down?
Yes.
Can you have a minute? Thank you. Yes, please, Michael.
So a couple of things. First of all, City Manager, I wanted to thank you for these updates. We, as elected, along with staff and, I know, school board members and select other people around the county, we get these briefings twice a week, and they're always very informative. So I definitely appreciate you distilling that information because it is a large amount of information. We meet for at least an hour twice a week to get this information. So distilling that, presenting it in this format, I think is really very useful to the public, and so thank you for that. I won't ask about when the declaration of emergency will end on this one because clearly the end is nowhere in sight, but just for, in, for the sake of transparency, I did want to ask. So I know that the emergency declaration allows us to fast-track certain things and avoid, or go around certain protocols that are required to respond to the emergency. And so for the sake of transparency, I wanted to ask, what have we, what processes or what steps have we taken that only would have been possible because of the emergency declaration? And what additional changes do we foresee happening in the next few weeks, couple of months that require that? And again, it's, so that people understand that if they don't see a competitive bid going up for something, that it's because there is a, an urgent need to do it. But I did want to get sort of a quick list of what those items might have been so far related to COVID-19.
Sure. The biggest item is procurement, as you alluded to, and so immediately we needed to have PPE, not just gloves, but face shields. There was a challenge obtaining N95 masks, and so we needed to go to whatever vendor had them. For example, one of, during, I believe, the first weeks of COVID-19, we found the vendor in L.A. that had N95 masks coming in on a pre-arranged shipment, and we had someone drive down to L.A. and meet him at the airport because they accepted our order, and we needed to get them for this community before they were obtained by a higher bidder. And so we were able to take advantage of that due to relationships, but also the ability to immediately procure. And so there was a number of PPE, personal protective equipment items that we utilized the powers in the emergency declaration. In addition, another recent example is the executive order for outdoor dining. The health officer announced that on Friday, and that same day, we were able to generate a executive order and regulations for restaurants to take advantage of that. And so that saved several weeks in having to schedule a council meeting to come forward and develop the staff report to present those to the city council. And so there's a number of items, but the main ones are procurement, expenditure of staff time is one of them. Overtime expenditures were significant early on. We're in a bit of a new normal now where we have employees that can do their job at home, still at home, but we have people that are essential workers and providing on-the-job service such as landscaping and maintaining our utility services that are at work. There was a little overtime that was needed early on, but now we're sort of in a new normal.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And we just one final thing. You know, statistics can be very informative, and they can also be sometimes misleading. And there was one statistic in particular that you quoted, and on one of the calls, the county health official provided some additional information that I think is important to share, and that is regarding our Hispanic population seeing the highest number of cases in the county. And the health official went on to say that it's not necessarily being Hispanic that makes you more likely to get sick, and it's, there are socioeconomic factors and the fact that we Latinos like to, we love family and we live in larger clusters, so if one of us gets sick, then more of us get sick than possibly other population groups. And why I say it's really important that we, that message get out is because we saw initially in the very beginnings of this pandemic, there was a lot of backlash against the Asian community because they were perceived to be either more likely to be infected or somehow responsible for this. And the last thing we want to do is to create this perception now that Hispanics are somehow carriers or more dangerous than other population groups, which is absolutely not the case. So just wanted to make that clarification.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions from council?
To the chair.
Laura.
So thank you for that presentation, Javon. There were a couple of comments that were made, or at least one of them, and then there's another one that I'm gonna, actually, two comments. One was the outdoor dining, so I just want to thank you for that information. I want to make sure that information is clearly on our website, on the COVID page, and maybe this, all these presentations that you provided can also be on our COVID page. I know that the COVID page typically has a lot of links to other websites, but I think these presentations are important, and they're very, they're informative, and it will actually get someone to sort of dig down in a deeper, deeper thought. But is, is a city working with the chamber to make sure that they're reaching out to businesses in terms of, you know, what the, the pulse is for wanting outdoor dining? I mean, Saturday night, I was talking with friends, I was like, I want to go eat in a restaurant, but, you know, San Bruno has always the best weather, and so it was a windstorm Saturday night. So outdoor dining Saturday night would not have been a good deal unless I wanted dirt with my food. So that's a question I have, and I don't want to provide a service that we can't utilize because the weather's not that great. So that's one question. And the second one is, I heard Stephen Seymour indicate that he's got face shields, so if anybody's reaching out to him, or if maybe he can reach out to staff to get face shields for whoever it might be, especially as employees start coming into the office to work, so.
Sure. Let's take those outdoor dining. A lot of analysis went into the ability to do what some other cities have announced, which is to close down an entire street to allow for outdoor dining. And there's some certain challenges with San Mateo Avenue that, that make that difficult, just how some of the restaurants are, are spread out to, to close the entire street. Traffic impacts, because it's a diagonal street, and there's no immediately parallel street for traffic to easily divert. And so what we did is, we worked with the chamber to survey businesses, and we didn't initially have a lot of takers that, that wanted to go through the effort to establish outdoor dining. Now, that's not to say as, as things change, that that desire won't change, but I'm, I'm sort of skipping over it pretty fast, but after a bit of work with the chamber and some analysis by our transportation folks, we concluded that the best approach would be really to be open to any option that a business thinks would be viable. And so we are open to any use of city property that is adjacent to the business, and we made the regulations very easy for a business to utilize private property, either something that's owned by them or their, or their neighbor. And we're doing dedicated outreach, and, and we will continue to support our businesses, as well as, we talk a lot about downtown, but there is also other locations like Bay Hill, and then the area where Jack's is, where there's private property that can be taken advantage of. And some businesses frankly replied that just the staffing and the potential use and the number of customers that may come to outside dining, they didn't see it as a worthwhile endeavor, because it would result in additional expenditures, and they thought having sort of limited expenditures and just maintaining takeout-only would be in the best interest of their business. But again, we're happy to support any request and, and look at it thoroughly.
Thank you.
And in regard to face shields, I think we have enough PPE for our staff, but we're happy to put that out, and we will let the county know that there are available face shields from a group in our community. The county did do a sort of all-out effort initially, and most, if not all, of the libraries have laser printers, and they really pressed the libraries and the service to develop face shields early on for the hospitals, and a number of face shields were generated that we used internally, but also went to the county for use at the hospitals. And so it's glad to know that there are additional face shields available in the community, and we, we will let the county know about that and put it out any way we can. Thank you.
Linda.
Yeah, thank you for the report. I just had some follow-up questions. So I've been getting a lot of requests for the opening of the hair salons, and I was just wondering what can we, is there any way we can split off from the county? I know the Central Valley, actually, most of California has now allowed for the opening of hair salons, and I think our public health officer has been excellent. I'm just trying to figure out if there's something we can do, because a lot of these businesses are cash businesses, and they don't, they're not going to have the money for rent the longer that this goes on.
So unfortunately, with the ability to override the county health officer, we don't have that ability. That ability is conveyed to, to the health off, to county health departments through state law, and so they have the ability to, to order a shelter in place. The law also provides them the ability to have restrictions that are more restricted than what the state allows, and that, that is precisely where we find ourselves in San Mateo County. Based on the assessment of our county health department, personal grooming and salons are, are not allowed to be open right now. That very well may change. We, we pay close attention, we're collaboratively, and are on multiple weekly calls with the county ELC that the health officer attends, but at this moment, there is not a timing for reopening that in our county, and unfortunately, as a local municipal corporation, we do not have that power.
Okay. I know one of our neighboring counties, I believe, has announced that it'll be, I believe it's July 13th or the 16th, so hopefully, we can get them open soon. Another two questions I've been getting a lot also is park and rec programs and playgrounds.
Yes. Playgrounds are not open here or in, I believe, any city in San Mateo County, but we, with regard to park and rec programs, we do have virtual rec programs that are open. We will not be having a summer camp in-person. We are planning to have a virtual summer camp, and we are also looking into partnerships. For example, what we do know that the YMCA will be offering some version of a summer camp that is eligible for San Bruno families, and so we are currently working with them. But those plans are really being formulated now, and there are a number of regulations about how the, the camp needs to be run and stable groups of, of just of, of under, under 15. I can't remember the, the precise number, but with our recreation department, we are not looking to have summer camps this year.
Okay. So then it's safe to tell the public, because it's a, it's an email and social media messages I've been getting, that San Bruno will not have any park and rec programs this summer in person? I think the request is coming in more this week, because South City opens their registration on Monday.
Right.
And so parents want to know whether, if they're going to drop their kids off, because they're going back to work, they can go ahead and register in South City, or wherever, or Millbrae, or I don't know, wherever they're going to go.
We will be sure to push that out if that is becoming a, increasingly a question. I know that several communications have gone out and questions are being responded to, so we, we will certainly handle that communication.
Okay, great. And then just one last, just a request. If we can look into the possibility of allowing our, I don't know what you'd call them, but maybe goods, goods stores, such as like Twice Is Nice, or the ones that I'm thinking of, or Lovely Bump, or would they be allowed to sell items outside on the sidewalk? I know that, I believe it's San Carlos, that has recently allowed their businesses to sell items outside, similar to the restaurants, just to, I guess, try, just to really try to attract people who are driving by.
Right. We could, we can certainly look at that. I do not want to give any definitive answers on that right now. Unfortunately, some of the challenges we have is our narrow sidewalks, but we, we can look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, let us, I did see a hand from a member of the community.
Hi, Stephen, can you hear us?
Yeah, very, my comments really quick. I just wanted to thank Laura for bringing up the face shield issue. Yes, I have lots of face shields, and Daly City has taken more than 4,000 of them. I, I have been walking up and down San Mateo Avenue, and I've given them to some of our businesses, but I did try to gift a couple hundred to the Chamber of Commerce, and they didn't take them. And I've offered them to the city as well, and there's been nobody asking for them. I did deliver a couple of dozen to the fire department on my own, but I mean, these are, these are life-saving instruments, I mean, and they're free. So if you guys need them, you may be purchasing them somewhere. We're in the midst of a, a problem being able to fund. We have what, what may be more than an $8 million deficit. I realize that this is just a small drop in the bucket, but I am willing to give them for free. All you have to do is ask. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else from the public. Are there any other questions? I thought I saw a hand. Okay. All right. Thank you for your report, Javon.